No. They seem to have occasion.
Yeah, they're not all about the park.
Yeah. Look inside their mouth and then went up there. There's a way up the road.
I think it's good luck. Lucas is on the right. On the front row.
They got a pool. Thank you, Brian, for this.
Oh, okay. God, so there's.
All right, we're going to call the board of the Park Township Board of Trustees work session for November thirty. All right, so first of all, we'll approve the agenda. You can see the additions and the deletion. Or does anyone have any additions or revisions?
I'm going to approve as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Approval of the consent agenda, you can see the approval of the minutes for last meeting. Look for a motion to approve unless there's some changes.
What more?
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Now, we're going to move to public comment. Those that want to comment publicly, we'll have you come up to state your name. Try to keep it to two, three minutes. So sort of that last signing. Anyone on this side want to comment publicly? I know you two are going to comment a little bit, so not you two, but how about the second row? Anyone? Next row? Back row?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. My name is Ted Vogel and I live at one forty-nine Crestwood Drive. I'd like to speak a little bit to the topic of converting South. Converting Park Township to Charter Township status. Which was discussed at length at your November meeting. For me, it's a bit of deja vu because my wife and I lived in Scioto Township. Adjacent to Ann Arbor, the city of Ann Arbor for twenty-seven years. And about thirty years ago, Scioto Township went through a very similar kind of process. It was soundly rejected at the ballot box. Scioto Township has been happily, has remained a general township. General law township ever since. And I'd be happy to share more of a detail with anybody who wants to know about it. So it feels a little bit like deja vu that this township would now, this township board would now consider this. And what was particularly shocking to me about the November meeting was the acquiescence that most of the board seemed to have with the idea that the board would just go ahead and do this of its own volition without a vote of the public. South Township Status, Charter Township Status is a big deal. It's a big deal, but largely because of the increased taxing authority. I think you've gone through all of the other attributes of it and there are not much differences in the way we operate today and the way we would operate as a Charter Township, except for vastly increased taxing authority in the board. So my first comment, my first point is I emailed you and I'm not going to repeat everything that was in those emails. But my first point is that whatever you do, you should not try to do this without a vote of the people. If you do, you're going to get a vote of the people anyway. But what you'll have done is force your constituents to go out and run a petition drive, collect signatures during the holidays and over the winter. And that won't sit well, very well with me and I'm sure it won't sit well with a lot of other people as well. So whatever you do, don't try to proceed without planning to have a vote of the people. The second point is really you should not do a charter conversion at all. The only real reason I heard given at the November meeting was that it would provide annexation protection. Annexation protection. Choose the term you want for it. Mirage, red herring, fake news, I don't care. It's not a real issue. It's not a real risk and it doesn't give you what you think you're getting. First of all, the only city that borders Park Township. Park Township is surrounded by other townships. The only city that borders Park Township is the city of Holland and they've ordered on twenty-nine hundred feet of Old Orchard Road to settled neighborhoods, not new developments, settled neighborhoods with utilities and everything else in place. It's been this way for, what everybody seems to remember, at least three generations, seventy-five years or longer. There's no threat of annexation. And even if there were, there's all sorts of defenses. They have to go to the Bond Re-Commission, Bond Re-Commission turns them down. I just read a decision from two years ago where the Border Commission turned down Ann Arbor where it was trying to annex islands, islands. That's pieces of township entirely surrounded by the city of Ann Arbor and they were turned down. So it's not at all a slam dunk. There's lots of good defenses. And in addition, if you, if you, if they were to try it, the residents of that area would have a vote. We have over a hundred residents, they qualify for a vote, they can veto it. Changing to a Charter Township, however, does open you up to some other annexations. Literally, residents could petition to annex away on a right that they don't have today. So the real risk of annexation is vanishingly small. But even if you adopted charter, it won't give you the protection you think you're getting. You have to have the whole idea on the law, you have to have seven attributes in order to have the annexation protection. Park Township has six. It does not have one key attribute. And that is, it does not provide solid waste disposal services to its residents. That is a requirement in order to get annexation protection. So if you were to become a Charter Township, you won't get that protection you think you're getting unless you go the additional step and basically replace all the private haulers who are working in Park Township today with a township provided services. You can get into exactly how, how big or how small that has to be. It may not have to be a hundred percent. But the Supreme Court only recently, not too long ago, said it can't be de minimis. It has to be substantial. Yeah, they were talking about water and sewer, but it's the same concept. So the bottom line is the stated reason for annexation protection is simply not a good reason. What other reasons are there? There's some enhanced authority for the supervisor that today is vested in the whole board. That's under there. I think I heard you mention there's a requirement of publishing ordinances prior to their enactment. Well, that's a requirement, but you could do that today. Nobody keeps us from publishing our ordinances before, you can do it voluntarily. So there really is no other reasonable basis other than this vastly enhanced taxing authority. That's the elephant in the room. And that's the elephant everybody in this township is going to focus on. I don't think you really want to go there. I think you've actually been fairly successful in bringing millage petitions to the public. I don't think you need that. And I think I've heard every one of you say that's not really what you're interested in. So setting all that aside, there really is no reason to do a charter conversion, in my view. So, thank you.
Anyone else on this side? Right, we move to the other side. Front row, second row, third row, fourth row. All right. Seeing no one else, we will close public comment. And all right, now we're going to move on to discussion items. We would talk about the conservation services at Park Township Community Park. We have two gentlemen here. You want to introduce them, Howard?
Me too. Let's start with Tanner, because Tanner is going to be up first. Tanner is an employee at the Outdoor Discovery Center. Tanner is the Outdoor Discovery Center's expert in in natural areas restoration. Tanner is one of those gentlemen who, when we walk out onto the field out there, we all, staff of the township, all see what we think are as sometimes weeds or just various plants or flowers growing. And Tanner corrects us and says, oh, nope, that's so-and-so plant and that's so-and-so plant and that's so-and-so plant. And Tanner informs us quite eloquently and articulately on how those areas and species contribute to the greater environment of our community and whether it be butterflies or birds. So in a nutshell, Tanner is the expert in exactly what you're going to hear today, which is to transform the site that is behind you into a site that is a a gem of natural conservation in Park Township. So that is Tanner and Tanner will probably give you a little bit more detail on his background as well. Tanner has studied this in college and again is, is just a fantastic resource, so thank you. Lucas, which is sitting right next to Tanner, Lucas is an engineer at Prine and Newhoff. He's a licensed engineer, licensed PE. And Lucas is an individual who has a passion for environmental sustainability, but also birding. And so Lucas is an avid birder, bird watcher. I'm not a birder, I'm not in the birding community. So I hope I am okay with the language I'm using, but Lucas is somebody who's passionate about birding. And he is our township's engineer and much of what he has done for us tonight, almost, I would say, I don't want to say a hundred percent because I can't verify that, but I would say ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of what he has done tonight has been pro bono, okay? For the township in his capacity as a sort of passionate birder. I will freely admit that Lucas, I still owe you the mug. I stole his birding mug and I still owe it back to him. So one of these days I will find that birding mug and bring it back to Prine and Newhoff. And I would, if you don't mind, Mr. Supervisor, I just wanted to mention Connie in the audience. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Connie Van der Schaaf. Close enough. Connie is our finance director, an absolute rock star individual and employee of the township. We are blessed to have an amazing fiscal, sustainable coffers in the township. You have a very professional government and Connie is one of the people that keeps this place running and ticking. She is a former county employee of twenty years or so. She is certified as a governmental finance officer and she does an absolute bang-up job for the township and the residents to keep our finances in order and keep giving us the ability to do all these improvements that we do. Connie, as just as a passion of hers to, to create environments for birds and butterflies has sort of taken this project on and on her, on her time as well, has kind of contributed to this effort coming in for you. So those are the three people that are really key to what's happening tonight. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, board, for having us here. Thank you, Howard and Connie as well. We really enjoyed meeting with you guys on this and we're excited to be here presenting to you tonight. So, once again, my name is Lucas Timmer. I'm a civil engineer, live in the Holland area, have some Park Township connections. My dad grew up in the area, so I definitely have an affinity for this great township. And as Howard said, I'm a civil engineer by day, but some of my hobbies that I really enjoy doing is bird watching or birding. So, birding has been a really popular hobby, especially since the pandemic. I think the board knows perfectly well how popular pickleball has gotten over the last couple of years and birding has definitely mirrored that popularity. And a lot of the people in the audience here are birders themselves and there are a lot of birders of all different ages. So appreciate birders too from coming to this presentation tonight and for the boatload of emails that some of the birders sent Howard. So thank you, board, for being willing to look at those.
And just so everybody knows, all of those emails have been received by the board. That is in front of you tonight.
Yeah, appreciate that. So Tanner is here as well, so I've gotten to know Tanner a little bit, both from my job as a civil engineer and being a birder. Tanner won't be the type to brag about himself, but he does a lot of really awesome projects throughout the area here. He's done an incredible work for Holland BPW with some grassland projects. So he's going to probably show some photos of that, which will be a great example of what this could look like. Tanner, I believe you worked at Tierra Yachts as well. And Hayworth has also been a big project. So he's done stuff both in the public sector and private sector promoting this. And this has been a growing field, I believe, this conservation group. So we'll move on to the next slide. So here's our presentation outline and I'll just give you a quick feel for who's discussing which item. So I'll first be discussing why a conservation prairie is needed. We'll go into the conservation prairie and the Park Township Master Plan, which a lot of birders attended, the master planning that Park Township put on with McKenna. We appreciate you guys letting the public come and being a part of that. We'll also discuss what we're looking at as some proposed conservation prairies for the board to consider. And then after that, Tanner will come up and go into more detail on what the project expectations would be, what your timeline would be, how we could communicate to the public about this project, what the different public and wildlife benefits would be. And then Tanner will finish up with what the implementation and costs would be for that, which is something that you as a board are going to be very interested in. Finally, then Tanner will talk a little bit about some of the signage for future amenities and I'll go into some other details that would be kind of a birder wish list for this area if we could have some additional future amenities for this site. So why is a conservation prairie needed for birds in Park Township? So the big reason is, is birds are suffering majorly. So we've lost nearly three billion birds in North America in fifty years, from the nineteen seventies to twenty twenty. So it's gone from ten billion to down to seven billion. And the group that's suffering the most is your grassland birds. So it's birds like an eastern metalark, which we show on the photo, who has lost, that type of bird has lost nearly seventy-five percent of its population. So this study was done by the National Audubon Society, Cornell Lab of Ornithology, and a couple of other different entities like Ducks Unlimited. And they looked at different bird data and citizen science projects and even radar, interestingly enough, can actually help you know what bird populations are because they can use radar to check migration. And what they found was alarming and the big reason for this huge loss in grassland birds is grasslands is a great site to put a development, right? Grasslands is a great site to convert to agriculture and all of this stuff is important. We all live in homes, we all eat, we need this stuff. But grasslands typically are one of the first areas that is either turned into agriculture or development. And because of that, birds like eastern metalark and other birds have significantly suffered. So moving on to the next slide, this one maybe is a little difficult to read, but the table to the left there is from the Michigan Breeding Bird Atlas. So bird watchers throughout the entire state of Michigan back in the nineteen eighties and in the two thousands went through every single township and they located what species they could find in the township during breeding season. So what they've noticed between these breeding bird atlases between nineteen eighty and two thousand is there's been some significant declines in specific birds. So some of the birds with the biggest declines include the American kestrel, which is that one in the middle, it's a beautiful falcon. It's actually been seen here at Park Township Airport during migration, which is really cool. I saw it a couple of weeks ago and I was walking the trails. But their numbers have gone way down. Agriculture habitat is just not the type of habitat they may need. They need prairie-type habitat, so they've been seeing some significant declines, close to twenty-five percent. Other birds is bobolinks. Bobolinks can be found at the Riley Street former dump site, that's now Riley Trails. That's one of the few spots in the whole county that you can find them now. Just because there isn't a lot of grassland areas anymore in the county. There's a lot of forests, there's some nice wetlands like Sufis or trails, not much grasslands. Killdeer, surprisingly. If you guys don't know birds, I'm guessing all of you at least have seen a killdeer or seen them running around, they're somewhat common here at Park Township, but even their numbers have gone down significantly and that's of concern. So the other bird that we highlighted is the eastern metalark, has a beautiful song. It can be found in a few spots in the county. Really, one of the best spots is Helder Park in Holland Township, which is a great grassland. And that's probably one of the only really good grasslands that birders can go in the whole county. So this, this is why we're passionate about getting another great grassland to help birds like this and for bird watchers that come into Park Township and maybe grab coffee at Ken and support some of your businesses and also go birding. So moving on, birds aren't the only ones that need this grassland. So pollinators are also in some dire situations. So Michigan, University of Michigan Dearborn has this website called Pollination where they're helping promote a different bee and other pollinator habitats. So I got some of this information from their website. And over the last seventy years, the United States has experienced an approximately fifty-five percent reduction in bees. Michigan's bee population has mirrored that. A lot of that's due to lack of habitat, pesticides, there's other specific things too why bees have gone down. But having a prairie habitat like this would be really important for pollinators like bees. And what I found interesting is, and I actually thought it'd even be higher than that, is pollinators account for one out of every three bites of food. So you think of all the different foods that you eat, a bee was likely involved in that. And nearly ninety percent of our flowering plants are pollinated because of different insects. So I guess moving on from honeybees, butterflies have also been suffering. So I'm guessing everyone in this room and the board has all seen a monarch butterfly. And they actually were listed last year in the endangered species list by the federal government. This year, they actually got bumped back up to the vulnerable list, so they're kind of right near that edge. But their numbers have gone down substantially, especially in Michigan. Reading different articles from the state of Michigan and from NPR and different sources, they estimate seventy to ninety percent decline in monarchs. A lot of that's due to this lack of good habitat. So areas that had good grasslands with milkweed have been converted into farming or have gone through the successional process where they've turned into forests and that then eliminates that habitat for monarchs and the other great butterflies that you can find in Michigan. So here is the master plan that I was detailing. So a lot of birders ended up going to this, the master plan discussions to talk about prairie. What ended up being decided by Park Township is to have a lot of this area be converted into prairie, which we appreciate. And yeah, we are, I guess, excited to see this airport area that is essentially a lot of spotted knappweed, which is an invasive plant, which has really no use. Get turned into something that can be useful to wildlife and also for people recreating in the area. So the next slide shows some areas that Tanner has quoted out as potential conservation prairie areas. So a few things to note on this slide. What we've discussed with Howard and Connie and Tanner is we'd have a heavier wildflower concentration in some of the areas near Auto Beach Road. That would create a lot of beauty for people going by your park if they can see some wildflowers while going out to the state park. We also show some wildflower areas then at the, it'd be the northwest corner there of Auto Beach Road and One Fifty Second as well. And we know those areas from your master plan are being promoted to be like a community center in the future or more of a drone parking area for drone enthusiasts. But depending on how long you guys wait to do those things, we would encourage the board to at least consider turning some of those areas into prairie. Because the costs aren't significant per acre. And if you're waiting on that and you have a beautiful area of prairie and then you wait on those other areas that look like kind of dead grass and spotted knappweed, it's not going to be probably the best look, you know, from Auto Beach Road. So we'd encourage you guys at least to consider doing some of those areas as well. So yeah, and there's also different trails too that are being promoted. I know, is it Mike Nylund, Howard, that's putting those trails in pretty soon here, so.
Yeah, let me just real quick jump in. It's, it is Mike Nylund of Lakeshore Excavating and we have about, there's already been about eighty-seven-ish thousand dollars of trail work that is ongoing right now on the property. So those trails that you're seeing on that map, for those in the audience, those are being installed.
Yeah, thank you, Howard. So yeah, we're thrilled as a birding community to have trails and we'd really like you guys to consider, you know, now that you're getting the trails, let's take the next step and let's turn this into Conservation Prairie. So one of the concerns that we have with the current setup is just the use of drones. I think some other birders that they want, they can pitch in if they are interested. We're not, I guess, thrilled that drones are there. We understand the decisions being made with this being an airport, that the drone community has definitely a connection to that. So that's something that we're not thrilled about, we would be, you know, we're happy that you guys are doing this. So I don't want to come off as sour grapes, but we just have some concerns with drones flying over, how that could impact different wildlife in the area. So before I hand it off to Tanner, does anyone have any questions for me? That's a great question and that, that's something that we could be willing to provide you more information. Generally, your breeding season is probably also your best time to fly drones. So breeding season would be, I want to say typically mid-May. Birders are not in their head, so that's good, probably into June and early July to mid-July, I guess. So anywhere from mid-May to mid-July is typically your breeding season. So we would love if there could be some form of protection, I guess, for birds and maybe the drones could use the fair property during that time and then come back, you know, later in the summer then. But if that's something you guys would consider, that'd be very much appreciated, so. Yeah, time of day, Scott brought up time of day is something that could be considered too with birds as well, so.
The reason for the drones is when we, when the millage was passed, or I should say, when the millage was put before the residents, the wording was such, and this has been a few years ago, so I'm just going by memory, was such that we would commit to have some sort of airport activities on the location if the airport went away. So that was the wording of the village and so we want to keep our word. I don't own a drone, so I can't come into that.
But don't we also allow alter lights?
No powered parachutes.
Powered parachute, yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Any other questions? Yeah, those, those are different than alter lights. So thank you.
Well, thanks for having us. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to present this to you. It's cool to see the birding community kind of band together with this too. Lucas has been awesome helping this project kind of get some traction. So I'll, we already covered it, but I'm Tanner Bricker. I'm the Conservation Services Director for ODC Network. So we're involved with all the conservation side of the organization. As part of that, we have our Conservation Services business line where we do the whole spectrum of ecological restoration services for hire in West Michigan, so. And I'll just dive into a little bit about project expectations, timeline, costs, along with some photo progressions. So expectations-wise, projects from seed, you're expecting two to three full growing seasons to get near full maturity. That's just kind of the natural timeline. Site preparation is going to be the most important step. Lucas kind of covered this already, but there's a lot of invasive species out there. So, including spotted knappweed. So all of twenty twenty-four, as we have it currently laid out, would be dedicated to preparing the site, just getting rid of existing vegetation. And then so that first three-year period, a lot of these perennials are pretty slow developing. so that first three-year period, a lot of these perennials are pretty slow developing. So I kind of laid out a timeline of what you'd expect those first three years, but you're going to have quite a bit of upfront maintenance during those three years as well, just to reduce competition with the developing perennials. And during that kind of awkward first three-year period, public outreach is very important. Lucas mentioned having more wildflowers in certain areas of high visibility. We've had a lot of success with that this year. That's actually a photo of the water treatment plant right across from Tunnel Park. So that is actually year one of that project, had a ton of positive feedback on that. Restoration progress signage is also key, just so people know what's happening with the project. Have some examples of that later on. But here's just kind of a general site progression of what to expect. So that first site preparation photo is just after that first herbicide application, you're going to see some dead vegetation. First growing season, you'll start to see some grasses coming in, but mostly cover crop and short-lived wildflowers, mostly black-eyed Susan. As you move into that second growing season, you're starting to see more perennial wildflowers, more warm season grasses. And then into that third year, you're starting to see more of your longer-lived perennials, milkweeds, silphiums, that such. Timeline wise, so we'd be looking at getting a mow on that entire 35 acre area next May, ahead of the first herbicide application in June. Give that about six to eight weeks, get as much as we can to germinate in between, get another spray on it in closer to late July, August. And that brings our timeline to get our cover crop down mid-September usually, followed by a late fall seeding. And late fall seeding usually favors more germination of wildflowers compared to grasses. Usually a spring seeding will favor more grasses. And establishment period maintenance, like I said, it's that three-year period following seeding where you're really focusing on eliminating invasives, reducing competition. And just to go back to that project communication, we have an example of our restoration progress signage there in the top left. Some other things you could do is promote that on our social media, try to new off website, Holland Sentinel articles, just to keep the public in the loop with what's happening, especially during those first three years. And we already kind of touched on the benefits, but just a few more that might not have got as much coverage is the time you save. Once these projects, like I said, there are some upfront maintenance, but once it's established, you're saving a ton of time and maintenance, eliminating traditional tasks like mowing you would do for lawn, eliminating fertilization, irrigation, biodiversity obviously is huge, air quality, reducing erosion, improving filtration through deeper root systems and just the beauty factor of it as well. Have some photos here of similar projects. That first one's at Outdoor Discovery Center, actually. And then we have another one at BPW Energy Park. Some examples of some signage that could be placed throughout the property. And then just trail systems as well. And to dive into costs, so as we covered, current site conditions are pretty rough out there. A lot of spotted knappweed. That's going to inhibit the growth of native species. So that's kind of phase one to get rid of. I don't foresee it as a great option just to leave it as it is out there because it's just going to continue taking over. So and as far as a return on investment would be, I always like to include what it would look like if you were to convert that to lawn. Cause really it's a comparable price range and that's going to be maintenance in perpetuity compared to trading a long-term asset such as a prairie that will outlast that and also drive down maintenance costs once it's established. And yeah, so right around that 2,500 per acre mark and that's scalable, but we have, on that original plan, we're sitting at around 35 and a half acres right now, which we could scale up or down, add those areas that you had mentioned or scale that as needed. And then just some price values with estimates moving on that three-year period of what we expect with other projects. Then again, just touching on some potential future amenities, these are some signs that ODC makes. Any questions? No. No. So if you did want high visibility areas, that annual mix will do better if you have sprinkling. So that could be an option on that southwest corner and near the community garden, which are smaller feasible areas. And that would just have to be for the first year or two. But as far as the whole picture, no. Um, that's a good question. It helps at the water treatment plant because they have the gate to keep people out, but I mean, people can, can cut some. It's not too detrimental to the perennials. So.
With education.
Yeah, signage is huge.
Huge. It's just educating the public, right? So. But yeah, people will probably come and take the fringes, you know, near the pass, but at least some of that stuff in the center areas would be a lot more protected. Right? So.
Uh, just 24 hours and it's only directly walking through the.
And then once it's third growing season, it looks really nice. The expectation is people to walk through there as well.
Oh yeah, usually try to keep them on the trail, just to limit disturbance, but for photos and I mean minimal disturbance is not a major issue. Just keep an equipment off. It would be huge. So once you get past that more intensive maintenance phase of those first three years, prescribed burning is a great management tool for prairies. And you can replace that with just a late fall mow periodically and once every three years after that three-year period is kind of the standard practice for that. Nope. Adapted to fire and the, yeah, the mow will just help. It's different option to reduce that thatch buildup.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may ask a question. Tanner, for the prescribed burn, is that a service that ODC would offer to us?
Uh, we subcontract, but we do oversee them.
Okay. Yeah. So that's from a safety perspective, from a management perspective that can be addressed.
Yeah. And another great educational opportunity too. At ODC, it always tends to draw a lot of people. It's a great.
I know, I know Washtenaw County here.
Does a lot of prescribed burn. I have never personally been a part of it. So I'd want to ask a lot of questions ahead of that.
Yeah, I had, I had wanted to, to point out the need for, for milkweed. And I understand that there's a, a plan kind of a being worked on by staff to, to address that. So I was very concerned about, about monarchs because of what's been happening to them. But I'd, I'd love to see a dedicated area with a heavy concentration of milkweed.
Tanner, my understanding is that the mix of plants would include a milkweed in the seeds, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think that's great to have that heavier area, you know, for milkweed. But what's going to be great too is all throughout that prairie will be interspersed with milkweed as well. So.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. The time period when you're excavating, actually killing the plants and then it's dormant. And then you're going to, I assume till what, to some degree?
No, we, we don't, we don't till.
So there really won't be any soil erosion during, during that period of time. The soil won't be subject to, to, to windburn or anything.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. And then after the entire season of the repeated herbicide applications, there will be about 50% of soil showing, but that's why we do, we drill seed our cover crop in September, so that'll hold on to soil over the winter. Gives us a little more substance to dormant seed.
Wind dust storms through our neighbors. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Uh, the second question I had is you, you made comment about one of the other parks here in town or in the, in the, in the county, either county park. Uh, which one was that?
Elder Park, which is Holland Township, has a really great prairie park located on Quincy. I want to say prairie 104, between 104 and 112. So it's a really neat spot.
Do you know how many acres that is that they have?
Yeah, I believe they have closer to 70 acres.
Good. We, we do as well. It's not as, if I may, Mr. Supervisor.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's not, it's, it's not as big, but Keppel Forest, the circular area of Keppel Forest is a prairie habitat.
Yeah, it's fun. Thanks, Howard.
You familiar?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Connie, did you want to make any comments as far as findings? You don't have to. I'm just giving you the opportunity. Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
One thing I wanted to mention to the board is that when we did a similar project at the old kayak, at the kayak launch, the current south side landing, south shore landing. Thank you. One thing, signage is going to be really important. Also, this board needs to be aware and the subsequent board needs to be aware. For a few years, it doesn't look that great. And that was one of the things that we had issues at that park is that people would drive by and say, it just looks like a bunch of weeds. And so we have to be cognizant that if we do this, we have to give it time to mature. And that was one of the things that Tanner and I talked about. Tanner's, an individual from ODC, Dave Nitre, and I talked about a great deal. We, we, if we do this, we have to be committed for a number of years before we realize that aesthetic look that exists on some of those pictures. Just want to point that out.
Yep. And, and I hear what you're saying, but right now it is a bunch of weeds right out there. So it doesn't look good to begin with.
Right. That's true too.
But the other difference is at the South Shore, South Shore Landing, right? That was in the neighborhood. So it's harder to make a prairie look nice when you have homes with nice grass. So a different setting, that makes a big difference.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? No. In the long run, it would likely be cheaper.
I agree on the signage, but that's very important because I go by Holland BPW's water treatment plant. I never knew that's what was happening over there. So maybe there's signs there, but I never read them. So now I know, now I know what's going on.
This year was gorgeous. Absolutely gorgeous.
We're happy with it.
So maybe you can answer, otherwise I'm sure someone in the crowd can. So if there's a prairie out there, where do you, what do you do? Do you just stand out there and look for the birds? I've never looked for birds. So.
Photography. I mean, it's like you walk slowly and you, you're very careful because you don't want to disturb what is landing there and it's, it's an observation for photographers, for scientists and for families to.
I walk slowly with her.
Very good.
I stop a lot.
So you don't walk through the prairie, you just stay on the edge of the prairie.
Right.
Yeah, we stay on the pass.
Yeah.
So that's like what Elder Park too. They have a whole trail network through there. You just hang out on the pass and a lot of the birds then kind of are more kind of near the middle areas, you know, they're a little further away from people and it's a very meditative kind of experience and I think everyone can agree with that. And the photography is awesome and it's just a lot of fun learning more about birds. So we'll have to take you out, Jim.
You should. You should. Take you along.
That, that was converted from a gold horse. And they, they turned it into a reclaimed wetland and prairie areas. And when I was working in Zealand, I would spend my lunch hours there with my camera and watching for birds or butterflies or anything that would, you know, come along. And it is, it really is amazing. Think that was once a gold horse and it's now, you know, reclaimed, but that's right off of Pocahonti in town. So it's, it, that I think might be a a general idea of what it can be that and yeah, Ottawa County has a lot of different prairies.
Good, good. Right. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate the presentation and you being here.
Yep. Thanks for the opportunity. And if you have any more questions, just feel free to reach out to me.
Will do. Great. Thanks. All right. Good presentation. We'll have, this will be more to come as far as discussion and how the board wants to proceed with this, but not tonight because we're just learning about it. So. All right. Now we have something, this is more of, this is a informational, board knows about it, but I think the public should know about it. So the public's going to know about it. So you can read your statement there, Howard.
I'm going to read a statement and then we'll, we'll take it from there. Before I read the statement, I'm going to say some of the things that the board being on. So the topic is our French and Community Park. As you know, you can see pickleball courts that are being constructed.
And that those pickleball courts should be finalized here shortly and you'll start to see pickleball play as well. As you know, there are trails being developed on that site. You've seen some of those, some of those diagrams today. We are working on a community center. The board has created a committee led by our esteemed colleague, Brian, and his team are working with a group of people, experts in their field to identify what does a community center look and feel like in Park Township and how is that unique to our community? How do we create a facility that is, that is not duplicated? Not just sort of just taking what other communities are doing and say, oh, we should have that and we should have that. But really looking at, okay, what, what is Park Township? What are the needs of Park Township residents? How do we best serve the community? And so Brian and Len Pilon, who is a member of our planning commission are leading that effort. So thank you. In addition to that, we are in conversation, negotiation with the insurance company. One of the reasons why you do not see construction out there is we are still in the midst of those negotiations. The township board has hired a public adjuster to negotiate this claim, if you will. It is a very large claim and it was a great decision by the board. So thank you all for making that decision. It was a phenomenal choice on behalf of the residents. It is a big claim. We are, right now, we are pretty far apart from the insurance company, but we expect to eventually in the end have a settlement that we all think is appropriate. And we will continue to fight for every dollar that we think is appropriate for that settlement for the residents so that we can build a, a first-class facility. So I wanted you to be aware that that is happening and that is ongoing. In addition to that, the board recently approved and is now just beginning construction. A mountain biking group is working on mountain biking trails throughout the Cooper Van Weeran Nature Preserve. Adjacent to the airport, we've got about 70 acres that is behind you that is going to be turned into a new park, which is the, the Park Township Community Park. Adjacent to those 70 acres is Cooper Van Weeran. If you don't know how to access Cooper Van Weeran, you go 160th to Perry instead of turning left as you would going towards the fire station and towards the lake, you turn right and go down to the dead end. There is a parking lot at that dead end. There are trails back there. They are gorgeous. Beautiful forest in Michigan, Michigan forest back there. It is a fantastic new park for the township. And so in that park, you will now, you will be seeing shortly mountain biking trails that will be available to residents and there will be some access points off of the parking lot here to access those trails in the future. We have a $25,000 grant from Consumers Energy to forest some of the area that is out there. I realize there's an interesting juxtaposition here between the birder community and the reforestation. And so we'll, we'll manage that appropriately, but we do have revenue and. and resources to, to do some really nice tree planting in the area that you saw on that master plan. And then obviously, we're gonna have some great signage that's out there as well. With that, I wanted to give you all an update on the community park, but I'm gonna go ahead and read a statement now here. And the title of the statement is Public and Media, uh, Statement for Environmental Findings eleven thirty twenty-three. As many of our residents have already noticed, Park Township has begun work on the development of the community park located at the corner of one hundred fifty-second and Ottawa Beach Road, the former site of the airport. In due diligence for the construction activities of the trails and pickleball courts, our team contracted Prine and Newhoff to conduct environmental testing at several sites across the property. We recently learned that the results at one site showed elevated concentration levels for arsenic and chromium. And another area showed an elevated concentration of chromium. These levels were above Michigan standards as defined by Part two oh one, generic residential crit, cleanup criteria. The testing site showed elevated arsenic was also above the criteria for direct contact. While we do not yet know why these materials are present at the site, we are committed to ensuring the safety for site visitors and those working on the property. We have fenced off the main area of concern from the public. In addition, we are coordinating with contractors working on the trails to ensure that they remain safe and that none of these materials are disturbed by construction. At this time, we have no reports of direct contact and construction is not taking place near the testing sites of concern. If you look out at that property, uh, either uh, this evening or when you drive by, you will see a very large circular area of um, red or orange snow fence. That is the area of concern, one of the areas of concern. Uh, going forward, we are conducting additional testing. So today there was additional workers uh, from Prine and Newhoff onsite to identify further testing in that particular area um, for uh, the contamination. To isolate those affected areas, that's what the additional testing is for. Once isolated, we will develop our plan for remediation and clean up in alignment with state guidelines. If you have any questions or concerns, please direct those to Park Township staff. Happy to speak with anybody who would like. Um, or uh, work with uh, or uh, who will work with our can consultants at Prine and Newhoff to answer them as best we can. If we have any questions that you all have, um, after the meeting, I'm happy to answer any questions. If I don't know the answer, I will get back with you. Um, know that our team at Prine and Newhoff uh, is working with us to uh, address these issues, um, and uh, so I wanted you to be aware of that. Um, and also, uh, as Mr. Supervisor pointed out, the board is already aware of that. Thank you.
All right, any uh, questions, comments? All right, we're gonna move on to uh, second public comment, so. Uh, those that want to comment, can comment. I'll start on this side. Anyone, front row, second, third, fourth, fifth, anyone?
Yeah, uh, thanks for uh, uh, discussing this subject of the uh, prairie conservation. Uh, I am Steve.
Do you mind stating your name?
I am Steve Hamburg. I am uh, president of the Holland Audubon Society. And uh, I want to just say that the Audubon Club is very much behind this. Uh, we have discussed it and uh, and we think that this is a fabulous thing. We too have noticed that over the years, the, the birds, uh, especially prairie birds have declined. And uh, giving us another place where we could see some of these birds would just be a real a, a blessing to all of us, because uh, uh, birding is our passion. And uh, and uh, we look forward to, uh, to see what you're able to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Right, anyone else on this side?
My name's Doug Wassink. I'm a longtime Park Township resident and uh, blueberry farmer and fairly avid birder, and I just want to express my support for the project and um, yeah, as a blueberry farmer, the native pollinators are important to us, uh, as a birder, obviously. Our habitat is uh, very nice to have and this is the kind of green space I really like to see the township pursue. And um, I uh, I'm doing a small-scale similar project on my own farm. Um, I'm in the site prep stage right now. I wish I had Tanner helping me with my project, but I get I get some help from the Ottawa County Natural Resources Commission. But I just like to encourage you to keep going on this type of thing.
Thank you. Right, anyone else on this side? All right, how about this side? Right, very good. We will close public comment. All right, any uh, board comments? We'll start on my right.
Not related to this, we, um, I, I would point out that the world's biggest lion. Otherwise, I would be very lion scamp. Uh, for the board, uh, we have a table for the uh, for the breakfast with our congressmen. Uh, it is on December eleventh, seven thirty AM. Currently, three seats have already been gobbled up. We have five seats available at that table. So if you're interested in going, uh, sooner or later, please let Julie or me know. Okay? And finally, somebody left a flyer here on the uh, on the uh, panel conference. Uh, I went to that last year, last January. And uh, it's a very worthwhile event. It gives us a, it's a great update for uh, what's going on uh, from the Michigan Township Association. Uh, what's new, what's exciting, what the legislation is, have a chance to meet our legislators. Uh, some breakout sessions on uh, what's coming up and, and action that we are taking as, as township officials. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a comment, uh, thank you everybody for being here. I think we received over fifty emails uh, regarding this particular project. We appreciate that. We always like hearing from uh, residents of Park Township, the Van Hallow family, and so appreciate that.
I have nothing because then I can take this hat off the sooner this mirror.
We're not, we're not quite done yet, so. Right, uh, first of all, Tanner, Lucas, thank you both for being here. Appreciate it. Uh, and uh, thank you all for being here. Um, I got a whole lot of emails as the board said, I'll try to answer them all. I'll get to you. But uh, thank you for sending the emails. It was a good discussion tonight. I learned something tonight, so appreciate it. And appreciate uh, everyone here and the interest that you have, so thank you. All right, with that, we will look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor? I opposed, all right.